Congratulations to the Republic, the United States of America, to the Republic of Canada, my nation, and their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You all have copies of your draft notes, number 13, 14, and one. And I have been listening to various media minutes that have been posted on the city website. Copies of reports from various committees are on your desk. And we have two communications. One from the Board of Elections certifying the recent election of City Judge O'Connor, in fact, for another term. And one from Susan Pepe, the branch coordinator for New York State Department's Environmental Conservation and Parks and Rivers Escalator Program. It's a letter to Timothy O'Connor affirming that they indeed needed a 30-day commentary period, which she was arguing for, and which she got. Resolutions. First resolution, Commissioner Dietz. And an introduction and a second. Rob? Go on. The next resolution is authorizing the Department of Public Works to complete demolition of structures located at 6 Lucio Avenue. This has been a nagging problem. There is a house in serious disrepair. Department of Public Works has offered to do this in the past, but they have not been funded. So this resolution asks for $15,000 to come out of the fund balance in order to demolish this house. We tried to sell it at a, well, the city tried to sell it at an auction, no one wanted it.
Thank you very much for putting this resolution forward. This came up at a meeting that I was at last week with residents of my ward. They were wondering what the status of, what about this building? So thank you very much, Mayor, for putting this one forward.
Drive an introduction and a second.
Can I ask you just a question?
Sure.
John. With the $15,000, I know in the past that, you know, the city lost in terms of their demos with the meeting of this. Is this going to be something we can recoup?
Oh, lots of shit.
I don't see how.
If we sell the property?
If we sell the lot.
Right.
I think it might be also a tax. I don't know what the status of lot is. Do you know, Mayor?
It's probably unbuildable because of the nature of the property and the ravine that's going to the house is actually falling almost to the back doors. It's a huge safety, so they don't think anything would ever be able to be built there. But things can change.
I know that on the corner of Third and Columbia, the city had to tear down the old C.C. Club, and the cost of that, there was asbestos mediation with that, was added as a lien on the property. And I think that kind, anything the city had to do doesn't mean we're going to recoup it. We still might agree to sell it for less than that for the reasons just discussed, but I think it's worth looking at putting that cost as a lien against the property.
Oh, yes, a lien will be put on. It's just collectibility, maybe.
But it's a lien on the city own property.
Right. And the concern is it was a immense safety hazard.
The next resolution authorizes a loan from the General Fund for Downtown Revitalization Initiative Capital Fund to allow for the hiring of a DRI manager. That's the one I did. I'm not sure if we want to do this yet for many reasons, because we haven't picked a manager yet. So I think we might want to put this aside until managers actually selected by the committee. But unless you...
When event?
Yes.
If the manager is selected by the committee, and it comes before us for this approval, or do we have to agree with their management choice?
Well, I think this gives us the power to...
With this decision of mine.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I think we should wait on it.
Yeah, maybe.
Unless there's objections, unless any of you wants to go forward.
I agree with you. They should have, whoever, their selections, maybe they should come before the council. I agree. I don't know about the rest of the citizens. I agree.
I agree. So we'll put that aside for now. The next resolution, the resolution authorizing a loan from the General Fund for the Water Fund to provide submission funds to meet current obligations. This came from the treasurer, also, I guess, by way of, from Rob, by way of the treasurer. I assume, Kylie, you would, this is a number, right?
Well, it's not unusual. The water and sewer bills for the end of 2018 will go out in February, so water generally always has a cash flow problem. So it's just the cash flow that they need. With the February billing, it'll be put back.
So it's just a carryover?
Yep.
Drive an introduction and a second. Kylie? Second. The next resolution authorizes a transfer to fund additional workers' comp expenses. Kind of self-evident. The rates, the initial guidance was that the rates would be flat, but it turns out they're not. There's an increase, and this comes from the fund balance. Any questions?
Well, I can just clarify, I think the way the workers' comp, the reason this $16,000 is not that the workers' comp rate went up, it's just that our denominator, our overall payroll and everything that actually funds that rate or is multiplied by that rate was bigger than expected. So it's not a rate increase, it's just that the monies that that rate is applied to were bigger pool of money.
Sounds plausible. Drive an introduction and a second. Tiffany. Second. Rob. The next resolution is for fund balance increase to the Youth Department, reimbursing the youth training program at Oakdale Summer Camp. The Youth Department is anticipating $8,366 additional funds, and they need $40,820 to meet their final obligations for their December payroll. Questions? An introduction and a second. They just need them to meet their payroll, and part of it's going to be reimbursed by the, not all of it, but...
All of it. There's actually, you'll see, there's two where ends there. We have money from 2017.
Oh, I see, sorry.
Yeah, so there's actually $17,000 in the fund balance, probably is.
So it's all coming in. This is just basically a loan from the fund balance that'll be reimbursed by these two.
From the county, and the county reverses back into the fund balance.
Correct. Drive a first introduction and a second. Tiffany and John. And the last resolution is really a technicality. It's, I'll read it, it's a resolution authorizing transfer of funds to newly created parking enforcement expense account. The current expense line for parking enforcement collection is being utilized by multiple departments. And whereas for budgeting and reporting purposes, it is advantageous to the city to track these expenses separately, and whereas there are available funds in the existing expense line to transfer for this purpose, and whereas the same budget transfer will need to be reflected in the 2019 budget. So basically, they're just changing the budget lines. No money's being taken out of any fund. Just one fund moving to another game, I think.
They just have an extensive amount to point.
Yeah, the numbers are right there. The numbers there. Yep. Any other questions? An introduction and a second. Kylie? Hello. Okay, we have two guests tonight. I'll introduce them now to the rest of the committee. First, Wes Powell, by popular demand. I think the council just wanted to know, to see you and hear what you do and how often you do it, and give us an update.
Any questions for me?
Hello, I'm glad you came tonight. One of my main reasons of wanting to know who you are is to be able to contact you. As we had a brief conversation earlier, there's several Hudson community boards or Hudson area community boards on social media, Facebook, and people are constantly finding dogs and posting the pictures of the dogs and looking for the owners, contacting police and things of that nature, or just reaching out to other friends to see if they're not ...
Instead of contacting me?
...to a dog or a dog. And it's not that, instead of contacting you, just like, you know, myself, I didn't know how to contact you and other folks as well. So my question would be, if you could have some type of social media contact where we can just tag you in these posts when these animals are found, so you can have direct contact of what's going on.
Which there is a Facebook link, which is anybody's information. It's animal backslash dog control officer. And links are right on Facebook, and it's a really good page. You find the owners that lost dogs real quickly.
Do you do this throughout the county?
Yes.
So it's back, face, pages for...
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yeah, because I cover 13 towns in the county, so it's pretty good.
What happens if you cross into a county or a...
Well, I don't think the media shut her out.
Do you also have a phone number to contact?
That's all beyond the pages, but it's 518-339-4008.
Facebook, do we also make a link?
You can go on that same link, whatever you need to do. Lost, found, whatever you need to do.
Is this a 24-hour number?
Yes, 24/7.
Only dogs?
For city Hudson.
No kids, yes?
So, last question. So, exactly, give me, give me some scenarios in terms of your duties in the city Hudson. For example, how do you enforce or what is the enforcement of dogs that are not currently registered with the city?
Well, if we find one that's not, like, if we know the owner, then they get a citation for no license or running a stray. They get that citation too, if we know the owner. If not, knock on doors with HPD and whatnot, and then last resort, they go out to the shelter. Columbia Green.
Okay, and then if somebody did notice, somebody walking a dog without a leash constantly, is that something they contact you with?
Definitely contact me, and they'll be addressed.
What is the volume of, like, per month in general of animals that you deal with?
It could be five, it could be 20, and depends on the case. I assist HPD on any cases that they know that has dogs in the buildings, and we had the one, two months ago, where there was nine dogs in one apartment. So you don't know where you're going to run into until it happens.
Were those dogs able to be adopted?
Yes.
Also, do you have any flyers besides social media, because there's still some people that are not into social media?
I mean, I don't have flyers, you know, but we could probably put something in the city clerk's office.
Yeah, let's create one.
Okay.
Maybe you know this, maybe you don't, but now in the building of Bliss Towers with a note from your adopter as far as emotional support animal, they now have, are allowed it to have dogs.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So maybe, yeah, maybe you can put some flyers in the area so they know what to do or do to call as well.
Right, okay. Any questions from the partners?
Take cats, too?
No. Dog control. What do you do with the cats?
We don't have animal kind anymore, which is a cat.
In the whole county, there is nothing we can do with cats, no matter where it is. We have no outlet, no contracts, nobody can take them, and it's a major problem.
Cat, where do you go there?
What about animal, the county doesn't do?
She takes a lot, but she's usually full.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Powell, for coming in.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Please tell me your information as we discuss and just work on that flyer.
Okay, let's get something out there. Thank you. Nice meeting.
Our next guest speaker, Ms. Christine Van Deen, from Columbia Land Conservancy.
Hi, thank you. So I am here representing the Land Conservancy and also our partner in this project, the Columbia Economic Development Corporation. Mike Tucker couldn't be here tonight, but he's also working on this project along with some other staff at CEDC. And so our idea tonight is to come and provide some information about a feasibility study that is underway, looking at a possible trail through some Columbia County communities, and it might actually end up terminating in Hudson. The idea, the impetus for looking at this possible trail is connecting the Harlan Valley Rail Trail in the eastern part of Columbia County and what will be the Empire State Trail running north-south through Hudson and other communities. There's this old rail corridor that was last known as the Boston and Albany Rail Corridor. Right now, part of it is in active use in Hudson. And then once you cross over the Claver Creek into Greenport and further east, it's an abandoned rail corridor. A fair amount of it is owned by Columbia County. Some of that is leased out to landowners, and then other parcels are privately owned. So it's a mishmash of ownership along the way. Looking at it, at this point in time, it's a feasibility study, so the focus is collecting a lot of information about the physical condition, the ownership, land use around it that might be good for a trail or might not be so good for public use on a trail. And it's going to produce a report coming out early next year. The work is being done by Weston and Sampson, which is an engineering and planning firm out of Albany. They've done a lot of rail trail work in the Hudson Valley. And we wanted to be sure that community leaders are aware that the study is underway, have the opportunity to share ideas or concerns with us, with CEDC, either now or follow up via email or phone call. We're planning to do some kind of a public meeting, maybe a walk on part of the old rail bed at some point during the course of the study as well, so we'll be reaching out with that information. And I have a flyer here, and it shows the area of interest. Since we know that a fair portion is privately owned, it's not only looking at the rail bed, it's going to look at, you know, what are the workarounds where there is no access for the public, where there's not likely to be a landowner who's interested in creating that access. We don't have funding right now for anything beyond feasibility study. This work is funded in part by a grant from the Hudson River Valley Greenway, and then CEDC and CLC are contributing matching funds. So it's just an idea. We're kind of excited about the idea that we have a trail coming into the western part of the county, being built by New York State. We have the Harlan Valley Rail Trail Association working hard to build the trail in the eastern part of the county, and to be able to tie Hudson into a Harlan Valley Rail Trail, link those two east to west, seems to make a lot of sense. So I welcome your questions now, and thoughts and feedback, and I'll pass these around. I might be one shy on the flyers.
Has this been, has the Greenway, of course, involved the Empire Trail?
Uh, yes.
And this, and how would this, this reconnect with it, with the county or...
Well, the idea is the Empire State Trail, and this study is not going to the level of figuring out exactly the path to connect the Empire Trail where it's planned to come through Hudson and where this old rail bed or, actually, the active rail comes into Hudson right now. As a feasibility standpoint, once you get to the street network of Hudson, there's probably many different ways that the connection could be made, and that would be figured out in a later design phase with much more of a public input and an engineering and kind of planning look than this kind of feasibility level study. Same thing on the other end at Millanville or Philmont. You know, once you get to the street network or there's sidewalks where it's walkable anyway, we're not going to try to figure out in this study exactly how you would connect the Harlan Valley Trail and what this trail could be.
So at some point in the process, do you, will your organization do title searches on any properties where homeowner thinks they own it and you may know differently from your work?
Yeah, right now, for this, we're not going to go to the level of title search, but relying on the parcel information and the real property tax service and then the documentation that the county has about pieces of it that they own that they have leased to landowners. So we're going to look at that, and then it's still sort of unclear exactly what the right route might be, so if any piece of it proceeds to a planning and design phase, then it would go to the next level of title search on properties again.
Go right through Oakdale Park?
It'd be great if it could end up at Oakdale Park, yeah, the kind of gallowy, slightly buff-colored areas, the area of interest, so I think it would be great if it could go to Oakdale Park, just knowing how much use that gets. And so it seems to be a facility the city invests a lot in and sees a lot of use in the city of Hudson. The big challenge is the active rail, or, you know, CSX being open to rail, a trail alongside it, I don't know whether there's the width and the corridor to even allow that idea. That's what's going to be looked at in this study, so we have some sense of, you know, what really might happen or could be possible. Thank you.
I was a little confused when you asked me this, but this is not related to the North Bay Trail project?
This project is a separate effort, yes, yep. But anybody wants to ask questions or talk about North Bay and our involvement in that project, I'm always happy to talk about that, too, yeah.
What stage is that project?
That project is in design, and Columbia County has a grant from the Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation that was awarded a few years ago to hire a consultant, which is Starway House, and to design a connecting trail from North Second Street to the Greenport Conservation Area, primarily through, you know, the intervening land there is, a lot of it is the old Hudson landfill, so that design, I think they're at 75% design documents. That project and design of that trail has really required DEC to review in multiple iterations, from just a concept of what might be possible across the landfill to the details of what the path could be constructed of and the profile of it and all of that. So they have gone through a couple of rounds with DEC refining the plans, the designs for that. We're waiting for DEC to give feedback on the latest submission of plans. Columbia County Solid Waste Department's involved, Ken Flood is the project manager for the county on it, and the Land Conservancy has been participating as an advisor in the design process as well, and also Don Moore, representing the city of Hudson, has been part of that for a long time, too.
Is this a project that the county has a $2 million kind of hold on right now? Is that the project?
They don't have a $2 million hold. The article that appeared in the paper last week kind of made it sound like the county had made a decision at the Public Works Committee meeting, but as far as I know, there's not a decision before them at this point. While the design is with DEC, there's nothing for them to really approve or disapprove right now. An initial cost estimate, you know, earlier in the project was, I think, $1.6 million to build the whole thing, parking area, bridge, overlooks, and the trail itself. That is being refined, and the design team's actually having another independent estimating company come in and take a look at what the cost projections are. So it's still kind of in the design phase, and, you know, decisions to be made in the future about going forward, implementing it, because the land that it traverses is owned in part, part of it's owned by the city of Hudson, part of it's owned by Columbia County, it's ending up with the Land Conservancy. It's going to be a multi-party effort, so there'll be a lot of kind of figuring things out, how to move forward between design approval and any implementation phase.
So getting back to this trail, what do you anticipate meeting from Hudson, during this trail?
Meeting, you know, during the feasibility, we'd like to hear what people have to think, you know, favorable, unfavorable toward rail trails.
Rather than Oakdale, since you're thinking of going through Oakdale?
We haven't gone to any specific entities like that yet. This is kind of our first public outreach, is going to elected officials.
I have a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 at the Youth Center. You might bring this over?
Yeah, that's a really good idea. I don't know if I can get to that meeting tomorrow night, but yeah, we should definitely be in touch and get input and feedback and see what ideas are coming up over there, too.
And you did say you anticipate doing a walk-through of the places?
Yeah, I think it's probably most likely going to be on a section that's owned by Columbia County right now, that it's kind of easy to get to and get access to. That's what we're hoping for.
I'm from the 5th Ward, so looking at this area here, and just wondering if you plan to come walk through and look there, because you quickly, I think, get a sense, as would the property owner, of whether you and they have the same idea of who owns the land.
Okay, if there's particular landowners you have in mind?
Well, I don't know, just looking at this for the first time, but, yeah.
Okay.
Do know where the railroad goes, so we can begin there.
Okay, good.
Does this trail, once it's completed, does it involve lights at nighttime?
Yeah, I think that'd be figured out in the design phase, looking at how much use it would get, who would be using it, and if it's compatible to have it open for nighttime use. I think most rail trails, unless they're through really populated areas, don't have nighttime lighting, because it's kind of assumed people aren't on them, you know, it's more like a dawn-to-dusk kind of facility.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes, Nick Zappo, Director of Hudson Youth Department. I would just like to say that I think this is a really exciting, exciting possibility, and we actually spent a bunch of time this summer with our nature program, the kids who were with that, talking about the possibility of this, of this trail connector. And it was a really exciting thing for our kids to think about this trail system coming directly adjacent to Oakdale where they all come to summer camp. And so I'm just really grateful that we do have the Columbia Land Conservancy coming in, spending their money to do these feasibility studies, in the Greenways, in taxpayer money, but really pushing forward with these kind of ideas, not only the Boston Albany, but also the North Bay connector. When we look at these in the larger context of our city, we're all of a sudden going to be able to expose youth and the rest of the community who live in an urban... and the rest of the community who live in an urban setting to really, um, amazing open space and trail systems, which is a really unique thing. So I'm...I'm very excited about it and I know our youth are also excited about it. And you did come, and you're being modest, I think, but you did come and talk to us at Oakdale and we walked some of the trail there. Um, and so, and as I said, at the...at the last Oakdale design, there was a whole conversation about using Oakdale as a trail hub. Because to get to your question, Tom, really, when the...when the trail comes by Oakdale, the only thing between this trail and the Empire State Trail is Oakdale Park and the middle school, which has its own road going through there. So really, you can see a kind of easy connector going from one trail to another and Oakdale kind of serving as a trail hub. So I think it's all really exciting and I wanna thank you and the Land Conservancy for putting all this effort in. I think it's great.
Great, thanks. And we'll try to get what you just described kinda on the maps and into the study is potential connectors because that's really great, um, information that's not easy to find.
Any other questions?
Just one for geography. Where you were talking about, Nick, what...what I'm envisioning is backyards on Lentwood, on maybe Spring Street, that...that's...those might be some of the folks. So that would be an area I'd be interested in seeing and having a sense of where the Land Conservancy, where you believe it is not private. Because that's some...some of the places where I've heard some of that, uh, talk about a vague, uh, thing that might be coming through and...up in land dispute.
Well, we can, um, as the consultant starts sharing maps of the corridor and the areas around it, we could share that with you and see if it jives with your understanding of ownership, what you've been hearing.
Banks are our friends.
Yes. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, open business or new business from the council first? Uh, let me say that the, um... The RFP for the feasibility study on John L. Edwards should be circulating this week. So that I hope you'll see a draft at our next meeting, our formal meeting. Anybody in the community that could ask a question or... That's it?
Ask a question about anything? Uh, I just want you all to see Preeti's face. This is Preeti, she's an urban planner from New York City. I'll let her introduce herself. Um, uh, she's...she's a little interested in, uh, what's coming up through the DRI project manager wise. And I wanted her to have a broad perspective of how Hudson operates, uh, starting here.
Well, in that regard, we hope to have a, um, overall manager of all our projects staying in place by the beginning of the year. And then RFP, they'll supervise individual RFPs going out for each project. I don't know if you've looked at the website for the DRI, but a lot of it's there if you wanna read.
How many projects are part of it?
The city has five. But conceivably, some of the other proj...there's thirteen altogether. Conceivably, some of those others will be managed by the same people who manage the city ones. It's up to the...it's up to those individual or groups whether they wanna rely on our general manager or not. But by rights, they can just go off on their own with their own project managers. But we have five.
You have five.
Which represent about six and a half million dollars worth of the ten million dollars.
So I've been coming to Hudson, I think periodically over the past couple of years. And I've met a lot of people. I met Tamara, met Nina, met some other people. And, um, I was working as a project director at a community development organization in New York for the past six years, started by the city to utilize public capital dollars to renovate public buildings and to subsidize artist workspace. And, uh, I just, uh, left that job after six years and I'm kind of like on a sabbatical in a way. But what I'm using that time to do is just to like focus on my own work and kind of learn more about communities that I...that I go to and see how I could kind of transfer those skills and help the communities that I spend time in. So, uh, Tamara suggested that I attend a meeting of the council and I saw a posting for an informal meeting. So that sounded like a good opportunity to come and to listen and to get to know all of you.
I would say, you know, starting in general, keep your eyes peeled for, uh, RFPs if you actually want to watch or something.
And in the meantime, if anyone is curious about her background, her website is, uh, a lot, quite a bit on it. She is an executive forefiling. And so, um, I think we're really lucky to have her here.
Just visiting, but open to talk to anybody.
Will you be relocating to Hudson?
I mean, my...after being in one place for six years doing the work that I was doing, I'm putting like no parameters on my future at all. So I'm...I'm open to anything at...at this point. I'm open to everything, I'm not sure.
But she's only two hours away.
That's amazing.
Would you say some more about, um, if the projects that are private projects and not city, if they choose to have the city's manager manage those, will they be contributing to the cost?
Each project has its own budget.
Okay.
Which, it's not clear that it's kind of fifteen percent of project total, but each project has its own budget. So it wouldn't affect...it would not be, uh, you know, writing on our budget, if that's...
Anything else?
I got a quick question.
On the...on the resolution for the demolition for Lucille?
Yes.
Is there a timeframe, just because of the nature of the weather and everything? If good snowstorm might become even more dangerous?
That's a good question. Mayor, you seem to know.
On the Lucille?
Lucille property.
It's gonna happen next year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's too late.
Mr. Mayor, do you know if the electric from the pole has been turned off?
Yes.
That's one of the concerns?
I believe so. There should be no electricity or water line to that property.
Yeah, there's still some, I think, my understanding, of the pole. Right?
Electric pole?
Yeah.
Um, I'll talk to...we can talk to Rob about it tomorrow. They're not gonna do anything dangerous. Okay, so that's it? First in turn, second. Please sign the resolutions.